You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 27th meeting for the LaPorte County Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening. I'd like to open the workshop relative to scoping out any type of efficiency studies, activities for all of LaPorte County. Call it to the beginning. Say that again? Former councilman, sir?
Which ones?
All right. Sirs. Thank you, Darlene. All right. With that being said, called us together just in order to try to put pen to paper and understanding what is it that our goal is here. Obviously, we, you know, if you were at the workshop earlier in the month, came down to what do we want to reduce our internal costs. Commissioner Hallifield has regularly come in front of his council and suggested since SB 1 started before it became SEA 1, to consider reduction in workforce due to attrition. Personally, my concern with that is it comes down to where the attrition would occur due to people maybe leaving or maybe retiring. May not be in the departments that can afford those, any kind of a reduction or consolidation or restructuring of any kind. So that, that one always made me a little cautious because we're seven part-time advisors to the county as elected councilmen. So we don't necessarily see the inner workings on the day-to-days. We may get a sampling depending on our availability and what reports we get from our liaison assignments. But look for somebody that's a non-partisan, non-elected viewpoint so that we can look at this as objectively as possible and also draw the scope as broadly as possible. Now, if any of you read the paper on Saturday, there was also a reference to a previous efficiency study. I would not mind, if that's available, I wouldn't mind reviewing that, but I don't know what availability that is.
It was a salary study. It was not an efficiency study. And it was to try and normalize salaries for, to see where we are on that level.
Well, that explains a lot. So, okay, we'll strike that. And we'll just go forward with what do we want to do with forward-looking actions. As I gather my thoughts this morning, and please don't let me just continue to run on by myself.
Oh, we'll let you take it all.
I mean, I look, oh, thanks, buddy. Appreciate that. I look at in-house, you know, in-house services, right? Everything from the departments that report up through the Board of Commissioners, those are reported to elected officers, office holders, your constitutional offices. We look at, even though you want to talk about public safety as being a situation where we're not necessarily experts and nor is going to be any sort of accounting group or consulting group going to be the best judgment related to public safety. Administrative levels may be worthwhile discussing. Sheriff Mullenhour, I look to you, former sheriff Mullenhour, I look to you as to say, you know, what your intake would be as a former sheriff, but those items. Also, part-time versus full-time. You know, what jobs would benefit from backfilling with part-time versus full-time or overall in terms of, is it two part-time individuals based off of the workflow and scope better than a full-time employee based off of what we're asking? I also looked at contracted services. Lease versus buy on IT equipment, bottled water servicing consolidation, lease versus buy on vehicles. What do we use for a service when it comes to outside scanning or document destruction? Then lastly, and it's a little outside of this, but it's something that would be more on the, as we are continuing to work with another consulting group with internal controls, is our purchasing process. In my world, in my history in private sector, you have a quote or a catalog item price leading to a purchase order, which leads to an invoice, which then leads to payment. In many cases, we have a kind of a jumbled order of that process that I'd like to formalize and clean up that basically you receive no invoices before the issuing of a purchase order. And the POs are managed in Lauf Financial with an actual purchase order number instead of a name associated based on a phone call that's made saying, "I need help with this particular project." But I know that is easier said than done when it comes to many of the projects, but this is why we're having a workshop to discuss all this. Exceptions that process may be related to your utility work. So it comes down to NIPSCO, INM Power, the cities of Michigan City and LaPorte and the town of Wantagh that all supply utilities to county buildings. So with that, that's the end of my script, self-written script. So I'd love to hear what, I have to count four of you have as input or response to any of that. Thoughts?
Not to put the auditor on the spot, but it might be helpful to share some of your findings from talking with a potential firm that could do an efficiency study. That might help frame some of the following conversation.
No, I have no problem discussing this. As I have mentioned in passing with a few of you, but not in full context of the conversation, we use, Wagner Erwin Schily is on retainer with us for services. And accordingly, I reached out to them first, and I just shot an email, and Kent Erwin just gave me a call a week ago. And so I sent it out on a Friday afternoon, and on Monday morning, I had a phone call from him. So Wagner Erwin Schily is a lot of experience working with HR and with counties throughout the state. They do a lot, provide a lot of services with them. They are well-known for us because they came up with the grids so that we can try and have everybody on similar pay so there would be less arguments. So our salary grids, they were the ones that helped create that system, and that system's been in place in this county since the 60s. We've got some books that even date that to prove it. So, anyway. So the gist of the conversation is that this is, could be an efficiency study, can be a very costly report. So what he said was, what you really should do is you really should walk down the list of your departments and decide whether every department is to be analyzed or whether there's some departments that you start with and then work on to others. But he's, one of the other key things, he says, this is something that you really, if you're going to go buy into it, go all the way. So he wanted to make sure that when, no matter who you choose to do the service, and we now have a list of six, which was better than I started with a list of three tonight, so this is good. And we will start contacting them. But before we do, it's best to know what the scope is. Because prior, a few years ago, when, as council president, I contacted Baker Tilly. And back then, it was going to be over $200,000, and it was only going to be, you know, half of the, half of the county's departments. So that is one of the things that they warned about. And also picking the right firm, knowing that they've done it before, not picking somebody who says they can do it. So we really have to see, we need to see final product, have them remove the name of another county. But there's going to be an issue here because in speaking with the other auditors, this doesn't happen very frequently. There possibly are a couple of the counties that I think I want to call directly because they have been leaders in contacting people like Baker Tilly to get internal control studies done, and that's why we turned around and used Baker Tilly and some of the other counties that I look to that have started moving forward with time management systems. And just to let you know, we ran into a little snafu with the one that we were, we wanted to go with, is that their scheduling is not as, I'm trying to find the right word for it. It doesn't give us as many options as one that is already in place. And because of that, we're going to look at one of the ones that's in place, but that may not work for everybody else. And then there's a third party that now has come into the picture. So we're going to be looking at three different firms between now and the end of the year, and then that way we can come back with a better recommendation. Not all of them are going to be available to start immediately. We're hoping that we can start those, that process, but that's a different story. So now let me pull back. So getting back to this, I would recommend that one of the things you do, and you can do this in samples, or, you know, you, or maybe if we find the right company, maybe they can also help us with the scope, expand the scope or shrink the scope. But I think you need to choose, you know, probably a dozen to think about and go out and take a look at those first. And remember that in some cases, there might be statutory reasons why there are employees in those departments. So we just have to be smart in how we choose. That's all. How you choose, not we. I'm not on there.
How about on the scope of contracted services? As we've got some recommendations and thoughts that came from some, from a firm that has talked about how to approach it and understanding what the costing would be. How about the aspect of what are we doing as a county with contracted services full-time? Is there a better way that we can approach this? Any ideas you have from your outside experience or previous experience with the county?
I don't, I don't know. It needs to come from an efficiency study. I think that might be something on us and the commissioners to look at what all we contract out and see how many different vendors we have from the same scopes. I mean, water's a huge one, right? I think we have seven different distributors or six different distributors that come in.
Yeah, so it's low-hanging fruit, but there is fruit there. And that's why nothing's been done. I actually, at one time, one month, and I think in the month of May, when I came up for air the first time, I started looking, and I think I counted it was either five or seven. And one of the errors that we're making, and it's, it's not a huge savings, is that some of the water companies call us, there's a cost for delivery. So if every two weeks you have a delivery, why not have it once a month and get two extra and save us $5 or $6.50 or $10 trip? You know, it adds up if a lot of departments were doing that. I also don't know if there's a cost savings by bringing them all to one water company. We rent, we rent the machines for low costs, mostly no higher than $8.50 a month or $8.95 a month. So that is not as significant. You can buy them for $200 roughly or less, depending if you wait for the right sale time on Prime. That's another thing where we save, we are saving, we're starting to save significant money using Amazon Prime. We also are monitoring every purchase. And somebody wants to buy paper clips, I remind them that we have coffee cans in my office that they're more than welcome to come pick up. So we, you know, somebody who's trying to buy, that we see, so before, I didn't have access to stop them. So if somebody wanted to buy furniture, they went out to buy furniture. That's a capital asset. That's something that you have always, the council, for years and years and years, and Mark's not here to vouch for it, but trust me, being there, Mike, you will probably say the same thing and someone out there, is that you always wanted to control the purchases. So if somebody wanted, you know, a large dollar item, a $500 item that was furniture, you wanted to, you know, they wanted to be involved. But before you know it, the $500 item comes into 2,500 because this person's got to get the same as that person, and it expands. So those are the things that I can watch out for and stop. And so now you may start seeing some of this come up in the next, at the next meeting. Not saying that anything, anyone in particular, but those are some of the types of controls and cost savings. I'm also going to suggest that we actually start a committee, a group of people, whoever wants to be on it, I don't mind chairing it, about cost savings. And I will tell you this, in talking with the, they combine it, Courtney Parthoon of the city of LaPorte, they do this on a regular basis. So they find ways to save money. So they have a group of, a group of people, and anybody can offer a suggestion, doesn't matter who. We could do the same thing with all employees, anybody who's got a suggestion, so we just don't have to look at water. Years ago, we now buy paper all in one area. And for those departments that don't know, there is plenty of paper, colored paper even over at Maintenance Department, and all you got to do is make an appointment, get over there, and you'll find reams and reams of paper if you're trying to do some self-printing. And especially for the groups that have, for youth programs or whatever, where they, they do a large amount of printing, whether it be 4H, Public Purdue Extension, or the Park and Rec, these people know about it, and I've been telling more and more. So there's paper sitting there that just needs to be used as well. So these are just lots of little things that can come up under a cost savings group. And sometimes it's just sharing an email with everybody that this is what's going on. Like we've done with, we had a, we had to stop Amazon because it was out of control at first, when I first got in. And we never really left it, but now they became a partner with municipalities or government agencies in the state of Indiana, and now have Business Prime offered to all of us, anybody who wanted it. And so we joined that group for additional savings, especially on some IT items. And, you know, we've had this discussion with Darlene, head of IT, that some things, that's the best place to get them, just because of price. And some of these little printers that are, these little desktop printers that are less than $200, they're disposable, you don't fix them, you just buy them, use them, and get rid of them. The biggest thing is finding the ones with the lowest ink cost. And so, you know, we, by using, by going with Darlene, that's one of the ways that we, we try and save if everybody runs everything through one location. Because she's always checking prices, whether it's there or whether it's other organizations. Because we find, you know, we had put in money in our budget as an example, and we have not replaced all the computers because we're just waiting for better pricing. We've got two slow computers right now that, one's a loaner actually, and one's a slow computer that we're looking to replace, and we're looking to get pricing from her. So those are the things, but we've already got the approval because we came before you for that bit of money.
So since you brought her name up. So earlier I mentioned rent versus buy when it comes to IT equipment. Whether that be copiers, whether that be computers, whether that be servers, what's your experience since you've been with county?
We're better off to buy because we do stretch things out, you know, as long as we can. So we'll take two computers and build one up and keep it for, you know, seven years versus five years. Because some of the applications in the departments don't need that much to run. If you get on a lease basis, you know, sure, you're getting them replaced every year or every three years, but you're having to go through that whole cycle of all. So again, you know, we can reutilize them. They may not work for something that the courts use, but they would work fine in the auditor or the treasurer's, you know, depending on what their applications require.
All right.
And then with the copiers, we used to lease copiers a long time ago, 20-some years ago, as Mark would say. And we got into, I mean, it, it costed us way more money to do that than it was to actually purchase them. Again, we utilize them until they die, and then we keep them for parts for the other ones that we have, you know, are the same thing. So we do over, overuse what, the products that we purchase.
And over time, the total cost of ownership is lower than what it is to lease, I understand?
It is.
And sorry to put you on the spot, but I have to ask because my experience is in a different environment.
If it was a smaller environment, I would say that would probably be a better ideal. But with our huge environment, it's, I mean, we utilize it until it just won't run no more.
Okay.
May I add to that?
Absolutely.
So again, you're, you're in a different environment because you have, you may have a group of people that are professionals, engineers like yourself, and so they're going to use certain laptops. But those laptops are only going to be good for some of your applications for three years or less. So that, that's a different story than what we, what we're doing here. So that, I also wanted to bring up something that we've already looked at once, even when I was there, and then I believe again this year, enterprise cars. Just to let you know, the city of LaPorte is trying it out. I didn't think financially it worked when I was looking at the numbers. They think it might work for them. They're much smaller scale. What I think would work for us if we had to replace a fleet of personal-type vehicles, such as the ones that they use at Community Corrections. I mean, years ago, a few years ago, we used ARP funds to buy like six vehicles. I mean, when you're talking about that size group of vehicles, and you have three here, three there, but when you're, I'm not comfortable, I wasn't comfortable with fleet, with fleet cars for the sheriff's office, you know, because there's so much specialization that goes in that, that when you turn them in, you pull out half the, you know, half the vehicle, or what feels like half the vehicle, that I'm not so sure that that was the way. And we drive them, as you know, because we have a great staff over at the highway. The mechanics there, they just keep everything alive even when we think they should be dead. But, because we pay for some transmissions sometimes that we shouldn't have to. But, but it's, there might be a good application, but now we have somebody local that we can watch. So these are the other things, these communications with other side, other municipalities. You know, I'd love to be able to talk with Michigan City if they, you know, if the opportunity comes up, but since this one is only a few blocks away, it's easy to walk over and then have a good conversation. And so, you know, we started, we started doing that as well.
Good deal. Mr. Mullenhour? Love your thoughts from being two different sides of county government.
Well, I think I spoke the last time, our last meeting on this study. And I'm def, oh, sorry. I'm definitely in favor of the study. Of course, I want to, I'm glad we're getting, what, six companies now or six firms that will give us some ideas on cost, because I think we're going to have to watch that. But we don't want to go with, I guess we just don't want to cut corners and not do it right. But on the same token, and I mentioned this the last time, if we're going to do the study, we're, and it, we're going to have to knuckle down and make sure it just doesn't get swept under the rug. Because there's been studies, Doug Beege mentioned the last time that he, when I, or last meeting, when I mentioned it, he, he pretty much backed me up on that, and he's been here longer than me. And he's seen studies like I have too, and they just, if it's not what you like, you're going to try to ignore it. And we just can't ignore it. It's, it's not going to be easy. You mentioned that a few minutes ago. It's going to be very difficult. But we're going to have to do something, and I think through attrition. And let's get, let's get the study started as soon as possible and knuckle down with it.
Okay. Mr. Kiel?
I think to focus the conversation, we, the majority of our general fund budget goes towards salaries, personal services, so everything from insurance to payroll withholding, perf contributions, all of those things. There's few ways that we're going to be able to cut costs without reducing staffing. That's just the hard reality of it, especially when 75% of the general fund is for staffing costs. So the question is how we go about doing that. I think it's worth us looking at the big-ticket items in our budget rather than smaller ones. Like things like, you know, too many different water cooler providers are worth solving, but they're going to yield very small savings. Something like health insurance and figuring out how we can control costs in that, something that's, I think, estimated to be like $12 million next year, a couple percent of that could be a substantial amount of money. So how we structure that, I'm not totally sure. But our insurance costs are a significant challenge for us going forward. Also, I had the pleasure of chatting with someone from American Fidelity that was here for employee enrollment. I got here a little bit early, and he was set up in this room. And I, I asked him, how, how does LaPorte County compare in insurance benefits to other government entities? Because they serve a bunch of them in this county and other neighboring counties. And his candid response was, we're on the high end for employee costs. So that's kind of concerning. Cutting benefits isn't necessarily a good thing if we're already on the high end. But how do we control our costs? So staffing, I think, is going to be the big thing to focus on. It might also be worthwhile for us to set up some sort of means for department heads and members of the public to submit suggestions or feedback about things that they want us to look into. And I know there will be a lot of things to filter through in that, but especially from department heads, there might be some useful information that we can take a look at and then guide our searches. Perhaps it's worth sending out a, called an all-users email, and are there any departments that could convert full-time positions into part-time in order to reduce costs? Or take a full-time and turn it into two part-times or just cut it in half? So those are just some of the ideas that are floating around in my mind at the moment.
Something on that too is the cross-training. We've talked about that for years, and I know some of it's been done. But I think that needs to be really emphasized and pushed too to, where some of these departments at slower times can maybe, where another department that's busy, busier a certain time of the year can maybe use somebody that's from another department that's, that's not so busy, and as long as they're trained properly.
Yeah. As, this also reminds me that there are, I did go searching for some statistics on our overtime usage by department. Currently, they're not really collected in a way that was able to be looked at comprehensively. So that's something for us to work on. But we appropriate a considerable amount of money for overtime over the course of a year. And somewhat counterintuitively, it might make some sense in some situations to actually hire more staffing so we're not using overtime so extensively. There is a tipping point where it doesn't make sense to use overtime. So I know some of the public safety-related departments are in that sort of situation. But before we go that route, it's worth investigating, why is there so much overtime in some of these departments, and how can we cut down on it?
Yeah.
If I may add, let's understand that currently we are getting records in Excel format, and they're not being summarized.
Yeah.
So when we get into having a time management system, the answers are going to be a lot easier to gather. So another reason for that process. Excuse me. And to let you know, that first software company, it was going to cost us under $50,000 for the first year and full implementation. So I don't expect this to be a huge expense for us, and from the others either, because if they're not going to match that, I know where we're going. But, so I really do appreciate, because that was really opened up, our eyes were opened up to see that, you know, when we put in for payroll, it's not tracking hours in there, you know, as easily. It's not easy to find. You have to go person by person, and you can't go by department. So, you know, it's not easy to, you know, the really good thoughts on trying to take a look at this. One of the other things that we've heard, and I'm sure you've heard the same thing I've had heard, is from these department heads, is that until they started getting pay raises again, which you're trying to do tonight, and when you approve the budget, we were losing people to other local, other, other government agencies. Public Safety Lit, four years, three, four years ago, really made a difference for us to keep people, but then because we couldn't keep up, you know, constantly keep up giving raises, that put us a little bit more into that situation. We also can't anticipate FMLA. I cannot tell you enough how many times the situations have come or where injuries have come and, you know, and stuff. You also have particular jobs, and I'm going to pick on one of them. They are, they are highly demanding jobs. E911 is a very highly demanding job. If you've ever tried to be on this end of those phone calls and to handle that, whether you're doing it for four hours, eight hours, or 12 hours, I don't care, it is a highly demanding job. And people who do that, you know, it's the same thing like EMS. You can't be working so much overtime. Or firemen, you just cannot be doing, working so much overtime because of burnout. And then you have people leaving for that reason. So you're right that we need to get the right staffing levels, but then you have to really start looking at salary levels again. And so maybe that's something that comes out as you go through this efficiency study too.
Understood. Okay. Mr. Pressel?
Yeah, I think we've hit on a lot of our main points tonight. I mean, I don't see another way for us to come in with any unbiased opinions. I mean, we're not in the offices daily to see where we can scale back on things. There's just no other way without, in my eyes, without having an outside company come in to kind of shed some light where we can make cuts. That's the only way I see us to be able to do this.
Mr. Kessler?
Well, I'm, as I'm speaking last, I mean, most thoughts have been pretty sharp and on point. The one, I think we, you guys have probably looked at as a council over the last several years, is the leasing. And I know we looked at it a couple times, and it penciled out better for buying versus leasing on those ones. I'm not saying we can't look at it again, like General Services are, you know, one of those where a little less stripped-down model type thing. But buying them right now is probably the way to go. But as far as getting the efficiencies, and I love the fact that there's six companies that we're going to talk to, we're not just going with one or two. And hopefully we can get a square response on where they see we need to go.
Okay. As I was, glad to see two commissioners here. Love it. Some ideas, if you've got anything that's spawned up from, from our discussion up here, any ideas, any recommendations?
A lot of my farm equipment we lease. I think it's an option to look at. Mayor Dermody has mentioned to me a couple times that we need to talk to this enterprise company again. Now, speaking with Sheriff He and former Sheriff Mullenhour, I'm sure you understand, the sheriff's department's probably not a place to start with, same as the county highways not a place to start with. But our fleet vehicles, like the vehicles we drive, the process servers, Community Corrections, JSE, I think that's something you should look at, because then you'll have a fixed cost per mile, per annual base for it. And then you can always have new ones, and then it'll, it'll cut down the maintenance. The guys do a great job of maintenance. They do a wonderful job. I mean, they keep telling me to get rid of my vehicle with 185,000 miles. I trust that more than anything I own. So I think that's one option to maybe possibly look at what they're, what the city of LaPorte's doing. And again, the cross-training through, in use of attrition, I mean, I've got people coming to my office, is my job safe? Am I going to have a job next year? I'm looking at buying a house. I'm looking at, you know, my kids. I'm looking at, you know, my kid's going to college. Am I going to have a job? The employees have a lot of questions, a lot of questions, unanswered questions. And as you know, some of them gone a long time without pay raises until recently. And 3% basically is the cost of inflation. I think that's something has been brought up before. When you get a full-time staff, building maintenance, they've got a full-time staff now, first time in years. They've got staff now that's got experience with construction, do some other things. If you get a full-time staff there, we get the pay raise, get the pay right for them, I think they'll stay, and they'll cut down the overtime tremendously. I just, just some things looking in, the inside looking out.
Absolutely. Since enterprise has been brought up a couple times, we did look at one. And in that particular case, I think it was one vehicle, and at that point, it just doesn't pay for itself. It's when you start getting into multiples. If we've got the opportunity, and we kind of missed one earlier in the year, where we had three for JSC and a couple for, a couple different areas that were pretty basic, you know, we'll call them civilian-type vehicles, right? If we would have lumped them all together in one purchase, that maybe it would have, the needle would have fallen the other way to where it would have been a lease option instead of buy, for cost-wise. Mr. Haney, anything to add?
I think you all brought up some really good points. I would agree also on the vehicles, you know, after extensive conversations with Sheriff Heig as well, you know, that's, it's something that, you know, you're putting a lot of wear and tear on the vehicles. There's a lot of, you know, minor cosmetic damage that can happen here or there that lease companies are going to ding you with, you know, when you're running a, you know, fleet service vehicles like that with the kind of use that they see. Not that the deputies are hard on them, but you know, when you're loading people in and out of the cars, you know, criminals don't necessarily care to keep the vehicles in top shape. They're getting it out and whatnot. I think one of the most important things to touch on here tonight would be if we are going to do a salary study, to kind of commit to have the fortitude ahead of time, or an efficiency study, to have, kind of commit to have the fortitude ahead of time to kind of look at it and be able to drill down on it and enact whatever, whatever comes back, should you guys decide to move on it, because it's going to be a significant investment to do one. And kind of, you know, who knows how it's going to come back, right? You know, however that does, we need to be prepared to act on it, kind of like the salary study, you know, some of that stuff, we still haven't, we still haven't fully acted on yet. And we may, you know, however those results come back, we need to act on them if they come back. So I think that's the biggest takeaway, is that, is that when you guys get ready to make a decision on that, just, you know, make sure to do it. Otherwise, I mean, there's, there's plenty of small things, you know, that, you know, from some of the low-hanging fruit that we talked about, like the water supplier, right? We had a local water company come in, well, we use a local one in the commissioner's office, and I think the assessor's office uses the same one we do. But we had, so I was thinking there's a couple offices use the one we do. We had a different competitor, local company come in, and they asked who our water supplier was. We told them, and they're like, oh, well, we're not, you know, they took their brochure back, like, oh, we're not going to beat them, and they walked out. So they provide great water to us, the company that we're using. I'm not throwing out names here just because I don't want to, you know, inadvertently put anybody under, or this person, the salesperson that this guy was using. But he knew that the rates for, you know, the one that we were using was lower than, than one of the, they were trying to switch to. I knew, I know at least one office uses that company. So those are small things, you know, but every, you know, at the end of the day, when you're looking at a budget the size of ours and as many offices and employees that we have, you know, those, those $10, $20, $30 here, there, you know, you start adding up to a couple grand a month for each department and, you know, various things, and, you know, it all counts.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Yagelski? Mr. Yagelski, your thoughts, sir?
Yeah. Which will you say?
Fair enough. All right. So Mr. Rosenbaum, you mentioned that you've got a handful of folks you, you had already had names for. I gave you the three that I looked at this morning.
So the other thing I do is I will reach out to the auditors group, because maybe, maybe there's some dark horse out there that has done one. And I doubt it, but I think that there might, this, like I said, there's one or two counties that have been very proactive in how they make their county better. And so I would like, I'm going to also reach out to them, so maybe we get another name or not, or an affirmation of one of these. So rather than name them off, I do have six right now, and I'll get more details on three of them. Three of them I have information on. They're not difficult to find, the people, but getting to the right department, we can get the context for the right department, we can start having conversation. But the big thing is on it, is that I need your help. I gave you, it's a handwritten list, I need your help. And we don't have, you don't have to do this this second. This is something, you know, you want to think about, and we want to handle some of this, you know, at another meeting soon. And then we could do that, it's possible to do that in November. We're hoping to have the revised salary ordinance for '25, for all the adjustments that came in because of changes of personnel, different stuff, and also the '26 one. Right now, I'm working with Wagner Erwin Schily to get the '26 grids. Once we get those, then it's easy to get to the information. I've already shot an email again off today to them that tomorrow morning, I'll hopefully have a conversation and work on doing that. It's amazing how two people can do a calculation and come up $30 difference. So once we iron that out on a few of the grids, then we'll be closer to having that done.
Okay.
But we do already have, so this is just some of the things to go forward on, and I'm bringing those out. But, you know, so you need to decide how you, as a group, would like to narrow this list down, so that you can narrow your scope down, so you can keep your costs down. So that's, that's the critical part, is the next step that I see.
All right.
Adding to what Auditor Rosenbaum said, I also reached out to, posted in a Facebook group that's for county, county council members statewide, it's run by AIC, and asked if anybody else had done an efficiency study, who do they use and what do they find? I got seven or eight, nine comments back that said, nope, haven't done one, sounds interesting, let me know what you find out. So it's, that didn't prove to be overly fruitful. And I think Mr. Rosenbaum had mentioned before, you'd reached out to, I think, a listserv for the auditors, possibly as.
Well, I'm going to do that next.
Okay.
We just had the auditors conference, and I thought this might have come up at the conference, but there are so many things going on right now that, no, it didn't come up. So, and, and when they're, they choose different topics that they need, they wanted us to address, and then it just doesn't seem time. They just go right to the limit. And, you know, if I hear anything more about internal controls, I just, you know, it's constantly, every time.
If you're able to get samples of prior work that some of these have done, I think that'll definitely help us in the process of figuring out how we're going to structure this thing. What did they look at previously? And that might give us some ideas.
Well, we'll contact them and tell them that we're working on the scope, but if they have, and then just like, you know, because I had the conversation with Ken Erwin, maybe others will have other similar ideas, or maybe something that will actually be nail it. So I don't know how much they're willing to give us examples just yet, in just initial conversation, but, you know, we asked when I was looking at the third time management system, I asked them for names of other counties, and boy, I had a list real fast. So, you know, I have, so I'm hoping something similar could happen.
All right. So let's work together on making these contacts, understanding what capabilities are out there, and then we'll make a point to bring this up as an agenda item for November in terms of at least an update as to where we're at.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to focus over, over this next week to get, to work on getting some answers, just so that, in order to have some time to, no one wants to put it in a packet a week before. I'm trying to, you know, this type of stuff where you want to look at, the same thing